All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the meeting of Euclid Township Planning Commission, August 5th, 2020. I'd like to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded. Also, tonight's agenda is Max Out, Tennis Addiction, and Audubon Land Group. There's no discussion on the Gray Brothers' property this evening. That's not on our agenda. All right. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes of our July 1st and July 8th meeting?
Yes, I move that we second the minutes of July 1st and July 8th.
Okay, Nancy made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
They weren't.
Okay. Now, we'll start out tonight. We're looking at a plan for Max Out, 247 Welsh Pool Road, a conditional use recommendation. Who's speaking on your behalf?
My name is Al Fescaldo. I'm the attorney for the applicant Exton Max Out LLC. So, with me tied is Dan Blake. He's the co-owner of Max Out. And also with us is Frank Tavani, our traffic and parking engineer. This is an application for conditional use approval to permit a fitness facility in an existing building at 247 Welsh Pool Road, which is in the Pickering Creek Industrial Park. It's owned PI Plant Industrial, and we're requesting a conditional use to permit this use as one that is similar, the same general character as other uses permitted in the PI District. You'll see up on your screen an aerial view of the industrial park, essentially at the southeast corner of Route 113 and Gordon Drive. The property is located, in the center of the screen, you'll see a tagline, or the note for tagline. The building is, tagline is a square building, in kind of white there, and just above that is the building we're talking about, 247 Welsh Pool Road. It's a 25,000-square-foot building. It shares a parking lot with Tagline, that's located in between the Tagline Building and the 247 Welsh Pool Road. To the top-right corner of the screen, you'll see Tennis Addiction, also in the PI District, and a fitness facility. And located at the bottom of the screen, next to the Automotive Training Center, tag is Gym Olympic. It's a gymnastics training facility, also in the PI District. Similar use. Tara, if you could pull up the site plan?
Give me one second.
Probably right in the middle.
This one?
That's it, perfect. So, this is, this is the site plan of the, of the, building 19 is the, is the building that Max Out, or Exton Max Out is going to be located in. It's going to take 5,000 feet, essentially, in the center of that building. Tagline also utilizes, or rents 5,000 square feet at the right end of the building for storage. Another 5,000 square feet of that building is maybe leased to a, another tenant, but that tenant will be limited to eight parking spaces total, and the other 10,000 square feet are currently not leased. Tara, if you could, if you could pull up the premises exhibited on the, in the center. So, then, Max Out's going to be taking a space in the center of the property. And just to orient the board, just give you a visual of the site. If you could show the pictures, Tara?
Give me one second. Can you see this one?
I can't, I just, I see your documents.
Tara, you have to reshare your screen to show the new window.
Can you see this one?
Thank you. So, that, that, this is a, this is a view of the parking lot between the Max Out building on the right in the blue, and Tagline is on the left. This is looking from the back of the parking lot, out through towards Welsh Pool Road. I actually took this picture on a Friday, at around 11 o'clock in the afternoon. So, you can see, the parking lot is essentially deserted. And then, Tara, if you could just do the other, the other view, looking in to the site from Welsh. That's it. And this is looking at the parking lot from the other direction, from Welsh Pool Road, looking into the site. Tagline on the right, Max Out will be on the, on the left. And just for the, just for the boards, just to remind the board, several years ago, a group called Mahastor Sports Center. Feedback. Mahastor Sports Center was approved by the Planning Commission and the board supervisors as a conditional use, a similar sort of fitness facility, though much larger. They were approved and decided not to move forward. And then, recently, the Parisi Speed Training Group was actually, made an application for this, this location. I believe they received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and then decided not to pursue the application any further. So, there's a history of, of these types of uses in, in the PI District. Unless the board has any questions for me, I'll introduce Dan Blake, or have him present. Then, he's a co-owner of Max Out, and he can provide you with some more detail about what Max Out does, and who they are, and how long they've been in the township.
Dan is muted.
Good evening. Thanks a lot for allowing us a few minutes to speak this evening. Max Out is a gym that is very community-based. You know, we like to be built around family, so, you know, we have our kids involved with the gym as well, to try and use this as a learning exercise for them on how to operate a business. And really, we try and, you know, use that same mentality all the way through the process of the gym. So, we've got local employees that live in the community, we've got clients that are both parents, kids, athletic teams in the area that would be utilizing the facility. And when they're not utilizing the facility, if they're dropping off the kids, they're also, you know, visiting local businesses, Starbucks, Wawa, to, you know, stay in the area and wait while the training is happening. And, you know, this, this business has been going on for nine years in the same industrial park. We just chose to move locations, you know, as a result of, you know, COVID-19 being a great opportunity for us, where we saw this location as a way to kind of stay ahead of the curve and maintain a way to keep our clients healthy. This, the space gives us the opportunity to have a large warehouse door, which will help increase airflow. We can have much higher ceilings that'll allow us to put large fans in, and then actually spread out our equipment more to be able to kind of keep some social distancing. And, you know, we thought, as a, as a gym, our responsibility is to make sure people maintain healthy lifestyles, both physically and mentally. And if we can kind of stay ahead of the curve and find the healthiest way to do it, this was a great opportunity to find a space that would be conducive to that. So, you know, with our lease, we looked at, you know, being here for the long haul with a five-year commitment, and the opportunity to renew that and extend another five years at that point. And I think it's important, we take a few minutes just to talk a little bit about how our gym operates, because it is a little bit different from, you know, some of the traditional gyms you might think of, like in LA Fitness, Planet Fitness. You know, we don't have memberships where people just come in and use our facility. It's a very controlled environment, where our clients are coming in for small group training, so it's typically going to be three clients, four clients, with one of our instructors, where we're providing a workout written for them. We're helping them through the course of their workout, so that they can meet their goals, safely conduct these different exercises. You know, and then after one hour of time, they'll leave, and a new set of clients will come into it. So, we don't have an open gym. We do have it all done by appointments, and it's small group training, so we're going to have, you know, a maximum of 12 clients in the facility at one point, with, you know, two different trainers. We do have parents that come in and use the facility. We do have, you know, youth, kids, that are coming in, getting dropped off by parents. And a lot of times, you know, those kids will carpool with some of their friends. That being said, our busiest times are typically going to be 5:00 in the morning till 8:00, so that parents can get their workouts in, go home, shower, and then get to work. And then, in the afternoon, after school, you know, we'll have that 5:00 to 8:00 afternoon, when kids are done school, and a lot of the athletes will come in, or if we have any teams that are coming in, those families will carpool, drop them off in the evening, do their workout, and then they'll be leaving. So, we are open from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but we do have, you know, our busiest windows on either end.
Oh, wow. Okay.
As far as, you know, the, the impact of really what we want to do, you know, we do want to try and keep everyone in the community healthy. We want to stay engaged with our clientele. You know, as a result of not being able to have training conducive indoors since March 16th, you know, our gyms tried to stay connected with the clients, so we've been doing virtual Zoom workouts. We've been writing workouts for our clients that they can do at home without any equipment, and we've been conducting some outdoor workouts over the last month and a half, you know, at local parks, to try and stay connected with our clientele. And that's something that we thought was really important, because we are about the community, and we want to make sure we stay connected with those people. In the past, you know, we've had client, we've had events with the Exton Chamber of Commerce, where they've come into our facility, and we've had, you know, like a morning coffee and social hour at the facility. And, you know, those are the types of events we want to continue to have, as we work with local teams, local community groups, to really stay, you know, apart and be connected with them. So, you know, those are really some of the things I just wanted to share about the gym. Hopefully, you know, that gives you a feel for the type of business we have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there's anything more specifically that anyone, you know, would like to know.
This is Nancy Kane here. I want to know what you're going to do about the CDC, you're not supposed, well, are you going to take temperatures when people come in? Are they going to wear masks?
Sure.
And are you going to have separation? How many people? You said how many people, but I noticed on your thing that you're going to be open from 6:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. And, and how are you going to control that, with the virus running rapid?
Sure. So, hopefully, you know, the history that we've had over the last couple of months would show the responsibility that we're going to take as far as keeping our clients healthy. You know, when we do, you know, have the opportunity to have clients in our gym, temperatures would certainly be taken. Masks would certainly be required, and, you know, we would be able to limit the number of clients that we have coming into our facilities, so we can maintain a safe distance, and certainly, you know, keep all of our equipment as clean as possible. We actually purchased some additional equipment, even for our outdoor workouts, just so that we had no sharing of equipment, you know, while we did that over the last couple of months, to make sure that we could sanitize between classes every single time, and that way it would stay clean. So, we certainly feel a responsibility to make sure that everybody is safe and healthy, and it's something we would certainly continue to do moving forward, and stay up with the most recent guidelines as, as they change.
Right, and how about ventilation? Do you have any ventilation in the, in the building?
Sure, so we would, we would be putting large fans in to help with the circulation. We would have a large warehouse door at one end of the facility, and a smaller door at the back end of the facility, so that we can have fresh air flowing through it, and we'll make sure to keep those fans circulating, to try and help with as much of the ventilation as possible.
And you mentioned something that you were, you were trying to do some things outside. Would you go outside and use that parking lot at all, for maybe running or jogging, or if there's nobody, where would you go?
Sure, so, so the outside stuff we've been doing has actually been at local parks. So, you know, typically, we'll find some of the different local parks in the area, and we'll try and, you know, do workouts out there on the fields, and that'll allow us to really spread our clientele out, and that way we can maintain a safe distance and also remain outdoors, so that we don't have, you know, too many people in the same area.
Right. Good luck on policing that.
Hey, Dan. Come here. Come here, buddy.
I have a question for you. And you said you do team?
I see my face.
Excuse me, can you please mute your phone?
Football, lacrosse, soccer teams, baseball teams?
So, we, yeah, I believe you were asking about which teams we've been working with?
No, no, I'm asking just generally, do you train football, lacrosse, baseball teams? And if so, how do you limit that?
Sure, so, the team, the teams, the sport that we use the most is basketball, because one of our trainers is a local high school basketball coach. So, basketball teams is what we've worked with most frequently. As far as the teams go, it's typically smaller teams, you know, where you have 12, 13 players on it. We have done some stuff with baseball teams before, and typically, what we have is those kids carpool, and, you know, if it's a larger group, then we would cut them back into two halves, because we really do try and make sure that we can have a small number of clients in our facility at any one point, and that way our trainers can actually be training them and working with them, because we don't want kids just coming in and working out, especially for younger clients. It's really important that we focus on the form and make sure that they're getting the correct training early on. So, that's something that we try and, you know, coordinate when we work with these teams to set up a schedule, where we can make sure to ensure that that happens.
Dan, it's Al. Could you, could you just talk about the type of training that you do, just, you know, the speed agility, cardio core? It's not, it's not, it's not, you're not teaching basketball, you're not teaching football, but it's, you're teaching, you're teaching, you know, it's more fitness-oriented with some free weights, speed agility, cardio core, that kind of thing?
Certainly, yeah. So, you know, as you can see on the image in the background here, you know, we have a large turf area that we utilize in our facility. This is for ladder drills, cone drills, you know, hurdles, where we have kids hopping over hurdles, and it's really, you know, working on quick twitch muscles, and a lot of, you know, lightweight activities, where we're trying to get kids to be healthy, we're trying to get them to prevent injuries. So, we're not looking at training for sports-specific, but really just for a healthy lifestyle, where we can, you know, focus on speed, agility, core, some of those key fundamentals that, regardless of sport, regardless of if you're an athlete or not, are important to just try and stay healthy overall. As far as the weight training side goes, you know, we're not like a CrossFit, where we have those extreme movements or anything. It really is meant to, you know, get your form, build those core muscles, and build a foundation where you're going to be able to have a healthy lifestyle.
Okay. Any other questions?
No other questions for Dan. I'd just like to have Frank Tavani speak quickly about, he performed a parking study for the, for the parking lot that's shared by Tagline in this building, and he'll discuss his conclusions, if there's enough parking there to support both buildings.
Oh, thank you, Al. Yes, I did prepare a study dated July 28th. It's 17 pages, three pages of text, three pages of figures, one table, and 10 pages of backup material. The existing site, as you can see on the screen, presently supplies 54 parking spaces in total, and the existing major tenant in building 20, as you heard earlier, is a company called Tagline. Now, as we know, we're all dealing with COVID right now, and that is affecting some businesses, and how those businesses have their employees come and go. So, one of the first things I did was contact Tagline and inquire whether or not they are currently operating with their normal employee number and normal days of the week. And as you can see, anyone who has my report, on the bottom of page one, I learned that they are currently working normal shifts, in terms of hours a day, and employees Monday through Thursday, and Fridays they're closed. As you heard from Dan, one of the benefits of this application is that their parking demand really peaks very early in the day and very late in the day, unlike an office use, for example, such as Tagline, or a light industrial office use such as Tagline, which tends to have peak parking demands in the middle of the day. Nevertheless, the next thing I did was actually go to the site on several occasions, both I and members of my staff, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, the second week of July, and also Saturday, or I'm sorry, the second to last week of July, and found that the existing parking demand is relatively light. In addition to the space the applicant is proposing to occupy, there is some additional vacant space in building 19, and I next performed a parking analysis, assuming not only this application is approved, hopefully, but also the remaining empty space is also occupied by other potential tenants. And I looked at the resulting total parking demand in two different ways. First, I consulted a publication called the ITE Parking Generation Manual. ITE stands for Institute of Transportation Engineers. They're an international think tank out of Washington DC, and they provide estimates of parking demand for various land use categories, based on national empirical studies of existing similar facilities. So, I took an ITE approach for the vacant space, and then I looked at what the applicant explained to me, as you heard tonight, in terms of his expectations regarding employees and peak visitors, and the times of peak visitors, and I came up with an approach based on that, based on essentially lease agreements and understandings by potential tenants in the remaining spaces. I put together a very detailed table, which was page four of my report, and what I essentially found is that, on average, there should be at least 10 empty parking spaces, even assuming that the applicant, the applicant is fully maxed out, and the other remaining vacant spaces are also fully maxed out. So, with that understanding, I believe that the site is able to adequately serve the proposed use, as, as explained by the applicant.
All right, thank you.
Dennis, can I just jump in real quick? We did get that traffic study. I did send it over to our traffic consultant to review. Unfortunately, he's without power and was not able to access today to finish everything. But we did have, as mentioned before, that Parisi Speed School that was looking to come into this location, which had similar hours, and their peak times being, you know, before a normal workday and after a normal workday, and the fact that they have shared parking on this site, the use seemed to, you know, be complementary to Tagline, which is already
That's, that's all the testimony we have. We're happy to answer any questions, Frank, Dan, or myself.
So, I have a question. Chris Mazzio, I was just curious on two factors. I know you're talking about, you know, availability and space for training kids, so on and so forth, but I was also curious about the farm being developed, the Grace Farm being developed, and the traffic study being assessed for running the traffic from Grace Farm into Bowsman?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. We are not talking about the Grace Farm at all this evening.
Okay.
This is, this is Max Out. We, we will post it on our website when we're having a meeting on the Grace Farm property.
Okay, because I got an email from our president for the HOA, and he said, "Get on tonight to talk about Grace Farm." So, I just, I-
Well, he was misinformed, I hate to tell you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All righty, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other comments about Max Out?
I would ask, anybody that's in the audience that would like to make a public comment, just use the chat box or unmute yourself at this time.
Anybody type in, or any comments anywhere? Do I hear a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept Max Out for conditional use recommendations as long as we, as long as they agree and comply with all the recommendations. I don't have all the listeners, Tara.
There were no review letters, Nancy.
There was just that one letter.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second?
You know what, Dennis? I would like to add, to make sure that our traffic consultant, when he gets the-
No, no, there's only three spots.
Do you have an open driver's seat?
Please mute whoever's talking, besides Mr. Flanagan.
I was going to say, I'd also like to make sure that their, our traffic engineer agrees with their traffic study for the parking.
Well, that's a very good comment, yeah. That, that, I'm sure that can be brought up above the super, before the supervisors, when they see our recommendation, if their traffic study is how it looks.
It will be. Yep.
All right. So, I had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You got your conditional use recommendation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay. Second on the agenda tonight is tennis addiction expansion, 202 Phillips Road. Who's presenting for them this evening?
Can you hear me? I'm on here. Is Anthony the checker?
Yep.
And Ted, are you on?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Okay, so Ted probably will do most of the talking.
I'm Ted Montalukki of Architectural Concepts. This is the existing property that was subdivided into two lots, where we have the existing tennis facility, and then a lot to the east that was subdivided, I guess, March of 2005, and updated as late as June of 2011. You can see in front of you what's on the screen now. The building in the middle of the screen is an existing building, and Anthony is exploring the possibility of developing lot number two into a country club, so to speak, of various tennis and racket activities, with a clubhouse and whatnot. Not that, not that drawing. That's, that's another scheme that is, is not being proposed. We're presenting a sketch plan that I, I sent over. That's it. That's the perspective. If you could show the, the site plan. There you go. That's it. You can see the, number one is the existing tennis facility, and on the right-hand side, on the east side, is a new development that'll have a, a clubhouse in the middle, which is designated as number five. The new indoor tennis facility, which will have four indoor courts, is denoted as number four. And you can see on the east side, there are four outdoor tennis courts. There are eight pickleball courts, two padel courts, and four paddleball courts. The, the clubhouse- The, the clubhouse and the existing tennis facility, the new tennis facility, which will have four indoor courts, surrounds like a courtyard, a lawn for socialization and whatnot. So we're, we're here to present a sketch plan that basically shows the development, shows the constraints that we have. There's a wooded area that is, was designated as a preserve. We're not touching that. In the upper left-hand corner of the site, there's an existing retention pond. We're not touching that. That will remain. We have two areas of parking, one of about fifty, three areas actually. One of about fifty spaces, one of about a hundred spaces, and one of about seventy-five spaces right in the front of the facility. The site slopes from, from the upper, you know, the northern part of the site down to the southern part of the site. And the number four building, the indoor tennis facility, will have an entrance at the top of the, on the second, just like a mezzanine floor for support services. But you'll also be able to enter at grade from the lawn. So we feel this is, the buildings, see the perspective of the building. The indoor tennis facility was roughly around fifty thousand square feet. The clubhouse is a two or three-story building. But again, it slopes to the south, so it'll be two or three stories on the low end and one or two stories on the upper end for social activities. They'll, they'll both be in the architecture of something that fits in with Chester County. And even though the building mass, it'll still have a resident, we feel have somewhat of a residential scale. And because the site does slope to the south, the tennis courts tier down the, the property. Each levels around ten feet lower. You can see that in the, in the perspective where we have stone, stone walls. But in general, it's a sketch plan, a rough sketch, to describe what Anthony's vision is, and he can explain that more in detail, but a country club of racket activity, so to speak, like Chester County Racket Club or something of that nature. So Anthony, would you like to explain some more about what your vision is?
Yeah, so the future, really with, it's not tennis anymore, it's racket sports. And this padel is a Spanish sport. That's the fastest growing sport. And I've recently become certified in all these sports. The picture's not accurate, and Ted and I met. So the platform tennis, which is huge now, you need a minimum of four courts to have sort of a platform tennis club. And they would go next to that clubhouse in the middle. We would hook the two padel courts onto the indoor club, which those two little things at the bottom of the indoor club could be designated as the padel. And then the, so the four, there's six like platform tennis courts. It looks like an orange up top. That's only four. They go next to the clubhouse. Those eight pickleball courts, which pickleball's huge now, we play now at tennis addiction. They would move up to the left, and the four tennis courts outdoors stay the same place. And, you know, nowadays, like if you go to a country club, I run Westchester, Whitford, and now Penny Packer. They didn't open this year, but they're open next year. They, everybody wants people to join the full club. And what I want to offer is I want to offer, you can join at any level. So you can join as a padel member, you can join as an indoor tennis member. You can do, join as a pickleball member, you can join as a platform tennis member. And then you can roll it all together, like let's call it a goal membership and join the whole thing. And the only thing we wouldn't have is golf. But there are, like, I've seen this model in Florida, and I've seen it in a number of different places. And there's a lot of partnerships that go on. You can partner with a golf club. There's just a lot of things we can do. And I work, you know, tennis addiction right now. I mean, I could just pay off my indoor building and, you know, retire one day. But I'm so entrenched in the community, and I'm such a big part of the community. And I have a young pro, Andy, my bookkeeper controller, she's on the call, she's young. And my kids are involved heavily in tennis. They're certified pros. And I just, you know, when I, when I had this picture before, I had no idea what I was doing. Everybody else talked for me. Now I know it like the back of my hand, and it's not just like a dream. It's something that I do want to leave as a legacy. And I think Chester County, tennis addiction is the name of tennis. And since tennis is getting, adding these other sports, I just think it's the right fit for now. The end.
Okay, Dennis, I have a question, a couple of questions. This is Rich Jordan.
Go ahead.
Anthony, as I recall, this plan, you presented a plan a few years ago. Is this just an update to that? Or was that never done?
Yeah, it's an update. Yeah, because I had partners at the time, and I didn't have the money, not that I have the money totally for this now. But I had partners at the time, and now I bought everybody out. And so on the, so, so this is an update.
I do recall that one of the issues was there was a pipeline that does go through this property somewhere. Is that still a concern or?
Yeah, Ted can talk about that.
Okay, well, that'll be, it's there, but nothing. Well, that's something that'll have to be looked at closely, I'm sure.
Yeah, they've already dug it up once since I've been at tennis addiction. And they did say that we're allowed to pave over it. But again, you know, I don't know what the township requires or anything. So I think Ted, when he drew the picture, he addressed, Ted, you addressed it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I think, as I recall, I liked the plan back then. I thought it was a good one, and I like it now. So good luck here.
So Ted Giacomis.
Yes.
Can you jump on here and explain a little bit the difference between the two plans? Because the plan was not recorded. It was approved by the supervisors in 2006, the previous plan. And was not recorded, so they came back to the drawing board with this plan.
Yeah, what, this is Ted.
Ted, do you want me to answer that?
No, I can do it, Anthony.
Okay.
This is Ted Giacomis. I'm the township engineer. I'm not the Ted that Anthony's been talking to. That is Ted Monzaluski, the architect and planner for this. So in 2005, as Anthony explained, he and his partners came to the township. And one of the first things they did is they resubdivided a few of the lots over in the Pickering Creek Industrial Park. That plan was later recorded and would be an official subdivision plan. What Tara is saying, there was a full set plans of a different layout. And I, yeah, that particular one geared really in on tennis at the time. And that gone through and actually gotten approved by the township, but it was never, you know, no action was taken on it as far as building it. And what happens is if you don't instruct the project within five years of an approval, you lose the approval. So, yeah, here's Tara showing the plan that was originally, you know, presented to the township back as long ago as 2005. And then some updates in 2011. We, you know, we were under the understanding that Anthony, that you were actually bringing this plan back to have it reapproved. But, so it sounds, not sounds, it appears that you have a whole new layout. You know, I will tell you, we've done no reviews on the new layout in terms of looking at the sketch and whether things comply. You know, and of course, we would do that at the sketch stage to save you a lot of engineering if there's certain things you can't do on your new plan. I'm aware, I see Ted on the new plan has parking planned, and that's entirely within the right-of-way of the pipeline. Also, your building is close to the pipeline right-of-way. There are certain things that you'll have to look at. The township has a requirement of, a structure has to be fifty feet away from the center line of the closest pipeline. I'm not sure. The other things I would look at as we're reviewing this is the, the existing wetlands. Since the time you've been in, there's now a buffer from the wetlands itself of at least fifty feet. And depending on the water quality in that stream there, it could be more. So those are a few things that may put a little kink in some of this. You know, I mean, obviously, it's, it's a nice project. It's good for the township. But we'll have to look at the new ordinances and see how they chime in here. And because the wetlands were delineated so long ago, you're probably going to have to delineate them again to make sure they haven't increased in size. So that's my short story of what's happened to this project. The, as I said, the subdivision that was done, and that basically traded land around between the tennis addiction to the farmhouse. You know, that's all valid as far as that, and we're really looking, as discussed, with the number two. Ted, you look, Ted Monzaluski?
Yeah. Yes.
You look really old now. I don't know.
Haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah.
Ted, I was also, also gonna say that he mentioned something about the existing retention base. And it would seem to me, we're doing a lot more impervious coverage here.
Yeah, that's gonna be a thing. You know, back in 2005, you know, we weren't doing volume control. Those are gonna have to be looked at. What I would expect is you're gonna end up with a bunch of stormwater management under your parking lots, under your tennis courts. You know, all the courts to be able to manage the increase in runoff in terms of rate control and volume control. So anything is doable. It's just how much you want to pay to have it done.
Yeah. Well, this is Ted Monzaluski. Our next, obviously, our next step would be to sit down with our civil engineer and evaluate all the township codes thoroughly. And see how we proceed. The, the requirements for some onsite investigation, like wetlands delineation, that'll all be part of it. Our initial sketch here was really to see, from a feasibility standpoint, you know, what could be done on the site. We feel it's very feasible. And obviously, we would, we're not seeking any variances or things like that. So it would be something where we would take a step-by-step approach. And the next plan, iteration of this, would be a plan that incorporates the vision, but also with all those, you know, compliances and constraints taken into account. So our goal was to make everybody familiar with what the new vision is and, and start the process. So Ted, your, the initial items are very, very useful. And, you know, we're, we're looking forward to proceeding with this plan eventually.
So what I, when I'm looking at, I'm gonna say this looks like a nice little sketch. But you've got a lot of work to do to try to talk to Ted, our engineer, and work out the details, correct?
Yes, we understand that. Yes, this is just a sketch plan, rough sketch plan. First blush at it, yes.
Right. Do we have any other comments?
And Ted, how about the water in the sewer? Is that the same as it was on the other plan?
Yeah, the sanitary sewer line, if you look to the right of the tennis courts, the sewer line actually runs right through the property. So, you know, they would be connecting to, you know, the public sewer. And of course, the water will come in from the road itself, which is Phillips Road. They would extend water into here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anthony, would you say anything additional about the operation of the facility or?
Well, no, I mean, the only thing, the only thing for me is, like, I just want to work with the township. Like, again, we came tonight to see if this would be something that people will like in this township. I mean, you know, now it's been fourteen years later, so I guess this is my lot in life. This is where I'm gonna end up in Chester County. This is where I'm gonna live out my life. So if the township, if we can do it on this piece of property that I already own, rather than going out and spending three-quarters of a million dollars to get five acres, that would work well. And the only thing we, like, we did add an indoor tennis building, and we took away the pool, because I'm not looking to have like a swim team and that kind of stuff. I'd rather just do all the racket sports. And I guess you could call it a country club without a golf course, or campus, or something like that. But, you know, it's, it just involves, it's sort of like an update. It's a 2020 country club. You know, it involves all the sports that are big right now. And so if we can do it, I'd like to do it. I don't have to do it. But if we can get it to work, I'd love to do it. I need something to do for the next ten years.
Okay.
My kids are in college. It's just me and my wife now.
Any other comments? Okay, back to where we were. I would say that the planning commission is looking over it, and it's a pretty picture. Let's put it that way. But anybody else have any other comments that they'd like to add to it, and they let them go ahead and start moving forward?
I just didn't want to waste money if this is totally crazy. Put it that way.
Again, I just, it's still Flanagan. I think your hardest part, I don't know, are those hard courts, Anthony?
No, no, they'll be soft courts.
Okay, because I just know it looks like a lot of impervious coverage compared to the previous plan with the indoor courts, the clubhouse, the paddle courts have to be hard. So I don't know about your other new sport, but, you know, it's adding a lot of that. I think you're gonna have to increase your water retention and a lot of stuff like that. So good luck with it, though. It would look beautiful.
We can look at it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Good luck to you.
All right, Ted, we'll get back together.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, take care. All right, take care.
Thank you. Okay, that closes number two. Next on the agenda for this evening is Audubon Land Group Turnpike Interchange Sketch Plan. Who's presenting for them this evening?
Bernadette Kearney here on behalf of the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm, I'm the attorney for the application from Hamburg, Ruben Mullin, Maxwell Lupin, and I'm just gonna briefly introduce the project and then turn it over to John Nielsen, who's a representative of the applicant and equitable owner. As you can see on the plan, the property is located near the turnpike interchange and at intersection of Route 100 and Sherry Boulevard. We refer to it as the Vanguard property since they own it. It come in for conditional use relief several years ago. And we are asking for, we're proposing three distribution warehouses which are permitted in the PIC district. We are asking for conditional use approval for the height of the buildings and for the size of the buildings and the number of parking spaces. People need conditional use approval.
So Euclid Township meeting already underway. I'll just see.
And for a public park. When we have out the application, we weren't sure. The intent is, the proposal is for the park to be public and for anyone to be able to use it. So we weren't sure if we needed that relief. So in an abundance of caution, we asked for conditional use approval for a park to be public. We also asked for relief in order to extend the time for construction, similar to the Vanguard relief in, in order to be able to construct the, the proposal. One of the other things we wanted to stress was the historical structures that Vanguard indicated that they would preserve as part of their conditional use. We will also be preserving as part of our conditional use. And with that, I'll turn it over to John Nielsen, who I believe is also on the call.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Yep. Great. So yes, this, this, our company, family company as was successful in in convincing Vanguard that we were a community partner and that we would do a good job in Euclid Township. And my daughter and I, Amber, started about a year ago attending meetings after we got the agreement on the property. Vanguard had proposed two and a half million square feet of office space and a lot of car, car parking on the site. And it gotten pretty far down the road. And I guess for many reasons, they decided this wasn't their way that they wanted to proceed. So they offered the property for sale and we were successful. In doing so, by attending all those meetings, we learned a lot about the community, obviously not like the people that have been here for many years, but we felt after attending nine different commissions and planning commission, parking recs, EAC, Industrial Development Authority, we, we attended many different meetings, probably didn't miss one between us, tried to learn all we could about the township. And one of the things we learned going through the comprehensive plan meeting was that it appeared that the township's interest of keeping this PIC and not change it over to residential was pretty clear. So the last comprehensive plan meeting we went to, it, the, that was not going to be changed. So we started to look at what other opportunities could we do here? Hence COVID shows up. And when COVID showed up, there was a big change to the way people worked, the way people shop. There was supply chain issues and constraints that really affected all of us. I mean, you know, hand sanitizers, toilet paper, you name it, you couldn't get this stuff. And what we found was there was, the demand was, there was a measurable surge in the demand for distribution because the infrastructure wasn't there when the pandemic showed up to deliver the goods quickly. So and that helped, you know, e-commerce, last mile distribution, onshoring also helped add to the demand of so given all that and given some interest that we had, we currently own and manage it for five million square feet. We, we thought, well, this will serve the local area and the region with good distribution. Now, when I say distribution, I don't mean warehouses, 1970, 10 warehouses. These are Class A warehouses that major users utilize and distribute from. And my nephew Ronnie, who is also on the call, let me just introduce a couple others that are on the call. So you heard from Bernadette, my daughter Amber's on the call. Ron, Ronnie Jr. is my nephew. He's an engineer. Brad has been with us for 15 years as an engineer. And then Eric from TPD is here. Ian, and I'm not sure if Patrick's here, from Orsady, who helped develop the park. And lastly, Kestra is BL Engineering. They're the ones that actually developed this plan. So all those folks are on the call to help answer questions. I'll try to do best I can to answer them. But let, let Ron give you a little flavor of, of what these buildings look like. So slide two, and Ron, you can, you can pick it up.
Sure. So can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the images that we are gonna show and present are some of the buildings that have been built or are, you know, renderings of buildings of these, these warehouse type things. And what you can see in these pictures is kind of how they break up the facades or the corners of the building. And what they try to do is for these Class A distribution warehouses is they typically design a, an office or flex space in the corners and create these, these aesthetically pleasing streetscapes so that they don't look like your, your classic 1970s, 80s warehouses. So this picture here is a building that Prologis owns up in Jersey that we thought is a very you know, awesome picture and, and design that we think is, is very appropriate for the, the plan that we are submitting. If you go to the next slide, this is another building. This is in Delaware, currently just constructed right in Newcastle County. This, this building is of close size to what we are proposing. And as you can see how they break up the facades and all the other architectural features that they put on these buildings to really break up the sheer size of them. And they do different schemes on the paint and all the different with the windows and stuff. So this was another one we thought was very appropriate and something that, that we are considering in, in our design. If you go to the next one, number four, this is a rendering of a building that we really like the facade of with the windows. And as you can see, some of the, the loading spaces to the page left on that, that, that's kind of how the buildings are designed to put the offices or the facades in the corners and you have your loading along the, the sides of them. And all these, all these buildings that we're proposing are spec Class A buildings and will be of the highest quality in design. So you could go to the next one. This is just another picture of a prologist building that we thought was very appropriate and, and very modern looking. And we, we really, really do like the, the look of these prologist buildings. So definitely something to, that we are looking at as we develop this plan and take the architecture a little bit further. This last slide right here, this is up in Northampton County. This is a rant rendering that's been done. We wanted to, because we, we understand we're looking at the grading of the current plan that was shown first, there will be some walls introduced since these are large buildings and but the wall and kind of how we break up trees and the landscaping and buffering, we're gonna do the best way possible to make sure that this is a very aesthetic pleasing to the surrounding roads and community. So yeah, you know, turn it back to John if he wants to go over anything.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Ron. So, so another reason for distribution I just want to touch on is, you know, with, with this, with teleworking, remote working, many CEOs of major companies are re, rethinking how, how they function and how they work. So office use on that site would be, would be challenging in these times especially because companies are getting used to the remote work way of doing business. And while certainly some will return to the office, I think there'll be some portion of them that will not. So again, that, that bodes well for this type of use that, that has definitely a need in, in our area. And lastly, retail, again, retail is under, under a major attack right now because everybody had to go with the e-commerce and shop online for a lot of things. So that, that again, would be a difficult use on the property. So that's just how we circle back to the distribution and warehouse use on the property. Also, I think it's important to note that the, the configuration, if you go back to slide one, we, we tried to keep the, in this layout, the narrow end of the buildings along the street frontage of Route 100. And that, that building is about the same distance as the Vanguard buildings were. And you also notice that as Bernadette discussed, the historic structure is exactly the ones that they preserved, we preserved. It was up in the corner, the silo, I guess is kind of a landmark in Euclid Township. As well as the main farm buildings in the middle of the property, also all preserved. Landscaping around and preserving the streetscapes along that way. Lastly, attending all the meetings, what I heard was a lot of things about how your park system functions. You have about 10, what I would call active parks, a lot of ball fields and sports fields. And you know, it sounds like you have great youth programs here. I realize there's some challenges right now with COVID, but you know, obviously this will pass and, you know, they'll be back open and back in business. So what I also heard about was some adult parks. I obviously heard about the EAC and their, their missions to create native plannings to really work on attention to the environment, creating environmental opportunities for people to take a look at, to people to understand and what the effects are. And having the Shimonah Creek come right up through that property, we felt that it would be a great place for a, what I'll call passive park. Park that is not designed to have sports on, but merely, you know, to bring people together, utilize individually, just to take a walk, you know, in these times, it was, people were looking for a place to take a walk. But then add some of these environmentally, environmental features that I heard as I went to the meetings with EAC, you know, butterfly gardens and, you know, rain gardens, a dog park. I'd like to do some charging stations, you know, for electric vehicles. Look, we're so close to the turnpike there. You know, once in a while, it's one thing to run out of gas, you run out of electric. It's a little tougher to charge that puppy on the side of the road. So you know, I think having some charging stations there is, it would, would be beneficial and also promote electric use of cars. As far as trucks goes on this property, you know, you can see what's happening out in Arizona. They're using a lot of electric semi tractor trailers. Definitely a shift. The EAC is looking to, you know, they're being, they're part of this Euclid 100 where they're trying to go renewables. And I think all those pieces are part of the education for the general public. And I think this, this park adds that opportunity to do those things. And we thought, while not required, given the, what we're building on the property, that at the corner, you know, setting the buildings back, this little park opportunity, I think, mixed with the historical group, which I went with them many times and understand their desire to preserve the history and preserve historical structures in the town. I think if you blend that and you blend the, you know, the environmental with a little bit of education and a little bit of recreation and a little bit of exercise, you know, I think you can have a real, real nice park that isn't focused solely on sports. Why don't we go to slide seven? So this is kind of a blow up of the park here where, and this was Orsady did this layout. I believe they did some work for, for the township on a couple of parks, but essentially about a mile of walking trails. You know, so we're gonna do a little grading around there. We, we kept the 150 foot riparian setbacks because it's the Shimonah Creek. Vanguard, back when they got early approvals, they installed crossings for where their road system and network was going to be. And we've utilized those as our trail crossings to take you up around historic buildings and then circle back around to where the parking area is. We've also looked at a reserved parking situation to add another 20 spaces. There's 20 there currently. And we certainly think that there may be need for some more. And I think if there's special events here, that, that'll be another, another discussion. What I'd suggest on this one is that the groups and the commissions that are interested in seeing this come to fruition, that we'd form a committee and over the next year, as we develop the rest of the plan, we, we get a lot of input from others and bring this to something the township can really be proud of, but more of a passive education, environment, protection and historical preservation park. So in a nutshell, that's, that's really what we're hoping to be able to do here. Is add a little nice feature, but also provide some, some goods distribution and warehousing as, as the world is changing and as the demand for e-commerce is skyrocketing, you know, there's been conversations where they say in 10 years, you know, we, we've had to change the, our way of doing business, what would have taken organically 10 years, you know, to four or five months. So while I, I'm hopeful that this will, this will pass, I think this use will continue for many, many decades. And that's pretty much my start. Obviously there's, you know, we've got our letters back and we have some work to do with traffic and we have some, you know, the township engineer, we have some, some things to iron out with them. But essentially, we're here to be a good community partner as Vanguard had hoped. And we want to work with the, your agencies. And obviously PANDA will be a big part of our traffic and get this thing, you know, approved and, you know, meet your codes. You have a lot of good codes. You have a lighting code that's pretty intense and it's unusual to get into lighting at this level, but it's important to, it's important to the township. So that makes it important to us. And we're gonna, we're gonna do our job and make sure we meet your standards. So with that, I guess I'm ready for some questions. And again, if they're specific to one of the consultants here, we'll certainly bring them on board.
Okay, I'll start off with a question. Main entrance in and out. I see you're trying to put a slip ramp onto the turnpike. But there's mainly one entrance coming in and out of the facility, correct?
Well, there's actually two on Sherry Boulevard.
Okay.
There's one where the existing Vanguard culvert was installed.
Gotcha.
Then there's one at the back there on Sherry. And if at all possible, and I think if the township supports the idea, which so far it appears they will, at least in the review letters, you know, the board obviously has to make their decision. But essentially that ramp there was one that was proposed when Vanguard was going to be here. And we would like to see that utilized. If you think about when the trucks leave, how convenient that would be. We, we expect a large portion of the traffic will be using the major arterial to deliver goods. So having that access without having to get out on Route 100 would be a big benefit. If we can, if we can do it, we certainly want to. The traffic study wasn't done with it, but we have full intention to push as hard as we can to make sure we can give it our best to let that happen.
Okay. Then other improvements that would probably have to be made somewhere, now that, now we got a way to get the trucks on the turnpike. Now we gotta get the trucks off the turnpike and into the distribution center. So that's bringing them up 100. And now we gotta figure out a way to get them into the site.
Yeah, if you slide the plan up a little bit, what, what TPD looked at, remember the traffic that we're generating here is fractional compared to 5,000 PKR trips of a, of an office use, the previous office use. We're in the 300 range. And so what we've proposed here is to do some work to the, to that jug handle so that it's more for the, what I would call larger trucks. So they'll still, they'll still make that motion, but it'll be in a larger configuration to, to manage the truck traffic.
Okay. And then I'm gonna go again. Um, my other big thing is I like to see, and according to your plan, there's a lot of buffers where you're parking 170 trailers and you're coming off the turnpike. And that I would, I would really like to see what you have a lot of buffer. So when people come off the turnpike and they enter Euclid Township, they're just not looking at tractor trailers. They can see some trees and stuff like that, which you have there. That would, that'd be great.
If we have to be, if we have to beef that up, Danny, we will do that. We, we will. We will work very hard to have a very pleasing look coming into Euclid. Now, I'd like to talk to that neighbor on the other side with all that junk on there. The town, the turnpike commission, we might have to have a meeting with them to clean up their act a little bit. Now, now we hear you loud and clear, we, we want the streetscape to be, you know, obviously appropriate. Obviously we're building buildings, but I think with landscaping, with, you know, buffer plantings, with trees along the, the building closest to the turnpike, we're going to have walls along there. I, we believe they may be terraced, but if not, there'll certainly be areas of landscaping along the walls to make it pleasant. So yes, we will work very hard to, to accommodate a pleasing streetscape. We understand how important that is to Euclid and we want to be part of that.
Gotcha.
Where would the people park that want to go on the trail and do a walk?
So, so that, there's 20 spaces there. We had our, our, our park planner also add another 20 spaces just in case the township feels there's a need. I'm not a fan of building a lot of parking and never getting used or used three times a year. I think when you have events, you know, I think that's understandable. You'll have to make some accommodations. Typically you use, you know, fire police or police to help manage the situation for that particular event. But in this case, you know, we think we can easily accommodate 40 and probably more if the township really feels it's appropriate. The trail should be pervious paved, again minimize impervious in that, what I'll call more natural area.
Right. Will that, will we be talking about that separately when it comes time? You're just going to keep all, keep that, you know, with the regular plan?
Our plan was to get it all approved and, and work together with the commissions that want to have input on that park. You know, we could certainly, if it's a different schedule that, that you would rather see or want more time to think about it, certainly we're willing to work with the township in any way to make sure that this product, this amenity to the community is all that we are hopeful to be and meets all of the goals of the township too.
That's a lot of warehouse. Have you had any interest?
We, we actually have had a lot of interest because of e-commerce. There's been a measurable surge in our interest level for these types of warehouses, these Class A warehouses, these larger companies. They don't exist, as you know.
Right.
In, in our area and there's, there's definitely a lot of interest. And this e-commerce is really, remember there was only a small portion of it. Now it's really growing.
Would you foresee this, foresee this being a 24-hour operation?
It will be typically it's 24-hour. What that does is spread the traffic out. A lot of stuff moves, you know, late at night. These guys start at three in the morning, so they're not interrupting. In other words, logistics companies really, really try to be efficient in their travel time. So they're not sitting in a lot of traffic. They want to keep moving. And so they, they study road patterns, they study traffic, they do a lot of things to try to minimize their delays. And that's very helpful to the logistics cost. And so they, and with technology today, you can do amazing things, tracking vehicles. All these trucks have all, they all have trackers on them. So they're know where all the trucks are all the time. It's, it's amazing what they can do today and they do it, you know, with technology.
And how many employees do you anticipate going to be in these warehouses? You have quite a few parking spaces.
We're thinking, we're thinking somewhere around 1,500. I'm, I'm saying, I'm kind of going in the middle. I've seen a number higher than that, you know, and lower than that, but around 1,500, we're thinking. Now that would be over multiple shifts, not, not one shift. And I think there's around, what's there, 11, 1,100?
That, that puts a lot of traffic onto Sherry Boulevard then. Would seem, I don't know.
Typically they would be, we, we obviously have to deal with the traffic and we obviously have to
That'll have to be.
Back to all that in, into this equation, no question about it. We understand that that, that's definitely needed.
Yeah. And Ted noted that, I think in his review letter about the truck.
Yep, for sure.
Okay. It's like a good plan.
Don, Charlie Clenden here. Who would own and maintain the park, the township or you?
Based on what we understand, it would be best if the township did. We'll, we'll put it together. We'll, you know, make it look the way that we have shown here, plus with input from the different agencies. And then we, we suggest that the township should manage it. Really parks, parks are something that's more about programming than parks. I mean, you, you end up with open space pieces here and there throughout the township. If they're not programmed and you, and have utilization, they just become green space, which there's nothing wrong with that. But in this case, ours was more to be an engaging park to, you know, really educate people about the environmental aspects, the historical aspects, because this all, it's all part of Euclid Township. And I know the EAC is a relatively new commission, but they have a lot of ambitious ideas and they want to see a lot of what I would say awareness to the environment and the impacts. Obviously building distribution centers affects the environment, but it also provides us goods and services that we all, really goods that we all need. So this was kind of a, taking a look at what else will help the township and provide what I would consider is a passive recreation facility.
Thank you. Second question. It's your intention, your group would continue to own this or, and not necessarily have in mind flipping it to Prologis or some big outfit like that?
We would love to own this complex and add it to the 5 million feet we have already. There are some tenants that are, don't like to lease. So I don't want to say that there's no chance one of the buildings might be sold because there are those instances where they won't come. They just say, we either buy or we don't, we don't come. Now we could sell them the, the actual building unit and have, you know, a condominium which operates the roads and so on. But at this point, I think it's a little early to make that commitment. We would love to, but I, we got to see what the tenant, how the tenant drives because they pretty much drive these deals. They have a lot to say about what we do.
Thank you.
Tara, for my benefit, can you point out the historical structures on this property?
All of these little white buildings.
Okay.
Here's the barn and the silo over here.
Okay.
And then you have these other structures.
Okay. Okay.
Those structures, they're, they're talking about restoring them. Back to the park issue then, who's going to maintain them? Are you guys want to maintain them or are they going to turn over to the historical commission or?
So right now, what I'd suggest during, during, during construction, I'd suggest that the tenant that exists there now, if he so chooses, I'd like to leave him there a little while. It's also eyes and ears on the property. If he chooses to leave, that, that's a, that's a different answer. But if he decides to want to stay there a little longer for a couple of years, I'd probably have him there if he chooses. Long term, I was, you know, obviously hopeful that the township or the historical commission would, would be interested in adding them to their historical resources.
Gotcha.
Okay, one more question. Are you thinking at all about having solar panels on the roof?
So that question's been brought up and we definitely have talked about it. They've done it in some state, some areas. Pennsylvania is not quite where it needs to be with solar panels. See, we, we also deal with, we're not, we don't have nearly the amount of sun that Arizona does. And Pennsylvania is, there's been some discussion about enhancing the tax credits and whatnot for solar, for solar, but at this time, it's not really viable in the, in the, in Pennsylvania as a competing energy resource. I have no doubt in time it will. We have the Greater Philly Expo Center in Oaks and we're in the process of installing a, a solar field on part of that building. You know, even though it's not quite where it needs to be, this is, this is larger scale, but we are not, you know, we're definitely paying attention to it. We have had some interest on some of our property for solar, really utility scale solar field. So definitely aware of it. And, you know, we'll keep our eyes out for those opportunities.
Well, we do have a lot of rain.
We know about that yesterday. We're still sweeping up.
I think it's a good use. It's going to be interesting.
Yep. Any other comments or questions?
I, Charlie Clenden, again, I think that's a, a very good use for the property. Doesn't generate a whole lot of educable kids and a lot of police necessary. I think it's a great use. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. I agree with you. Any other comments?
Again, I think we would just make sure to ask the public that if you have any public comments you'd like to make to either unmute yourself at this time or use the chat box and we'll read, read your comment aloud.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, Peter Cherna here. I'm a resident in Woodlark Farm. Looks good. I do bicycle along Sherry Boulevard and I'm also interested in how this might fit in with the overall trail ambitions. It's not insanely far from the Euclid Trail, but it is across 100, which is a problem. As a cyclist on Sherry, I definitely would say that not a great thing to have a lot more traffic on that road because it's fairly windy with not great visibility and people bombing down it like it was a Formula One track a little bit. Anyway, I'm, obviously you'll take that into account in the traffic study, but I'm definitely interested to see how this could be, you know, become part of the larger, you know, county township trail and, you know, southeastern Pennsylvania trail system.
Sure. I think there is a, about what, six foot wide trail along Sherry now, along the road itself out to the Route 100 crossing. But yes, we will definitely take that into consideration.
Yeah, the shoulder trail is signed not for bikes. So I take that to mean kids, yes, but adults, no. And maybe the answer is, you know, upgrade that so that you can have, you know, more adult bike traffic. I don't know.
There'll be more conversation about Sherry Boulevard and, and how, how to manage that traffic on there. So for sure, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public? All right. Well, I was wondering what we need to do for you, John, to proceed?
So we have to get a conditional use hearing and we would need a recommendation from you. I don't know if that was intended to be tonight, but that was my understanding. I think I'll let that with Tara.
Yeah. So this was just the sketch plan to introduce the plan. It did come in with the conditional use request. As mentioned, there were four conditional uses that were needed. So they will be coming back next month with, for the conditional use recommendation. And then hopefully we'll have the hearing scheduled in September.
Okay.
So you don't really need to make a motion tonight unless you just want to recommend that they proceed with the conditional use process.
Okay, does someone make a motion?
I'll do, I'll do that.
Recommend that they proceed with the conditional use process. Okay.
I'll second it.
I will second it.
We got a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, John. Thank you.
I just want to thank you very much and I really look forward to bringing this project to fruition together with Euclid Township and all these commissions that I spent a year getting to meet both in person and virtually. So stay safe and we'll be back to see you again soon.
All right, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah, so what?
All righty. Do we have any other business before the board?
We do not tonight. Just the announcements, I would say that the Board of Supervisors meeting is Monday night at 7:30 with the hearing for max out after the regular meeting. And then there's also a zoning hearing board meeting on the 26th of August.
All right. Thank you, Tara, for those announcements. With that, do we have a motion to close?
There's no other business. I'll move that we close the meeting.
Okay.
Have a second?
I second it.
Well, we have a second. All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Thank you everyone for attending. I think we had a good night.
Yes. Thank you. It's going to be interesting.
Bye. Good night.
All righty.
All right, be safe.